Just the.
Welcome to the forty sixth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please turn your cell phones completely off, even having your cell phone on vibrate. Will interfere with the tape recording of this proceedings. On addressing the commission, please remember to state and spell your name clearly and to speak into the microphones. So I see we have no minutes um to approve. Um but we do have. A request to add something to our agenda for today. Um so we're gonna need, because there's at least four commissioners, we are able to amend the agenda today. We're gonna need to um add. Agenda item number fifty five A. Also really need to have a motion to. Add amend the agenda to add fifty five A, a request number two five dash zero four three 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 from Keith Kyuchi. Asquire on behalf of Makaha Golf and Resort LLC, DBA Makaha Golf and Resort LLC.
Yes, Mister Vice Chair, so so moved as stated.
Section. It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda as stated, any nasal reservations, seen none, the chair also votes aye. We will add agenda item number fifty five A to our agenda. We now will be moving into our regular agenda eyes items. Calling agenda item number one. Transfer application number two four dash zero two zero one seven from Elise Enterprise LLC DJ Millions Restaurants.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners, Robin Melch on behalf of the applicant. Elise Enterprises LLC and to my right is Charlene Miura, the member of the applicant. We have reviewed the report and there are no amendments or changes.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to? Well, you first, right, um, Mr. Right.
Uh, thank you, Mister Vice Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters and support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the May twenty ninth preliminary hearing testimony. Was provided to Vice Chair Honjo and Commissioner Kunda prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to either testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners, any type of questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve transfer application number two four dash zero two zero one seven.
It's been moved and seconded to approve agenda item number one, transfer application number two four dash zero two zero one seven. Any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number two. Transfer application number two four dash zero four one nine two from JDL Investments LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Ning Yanglu on behalf of JDL Investment LLC. On my right is. The member Kun Ju Ling.
Miss Hara.
Thank you, Mister Vice Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters and support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the June fifth. Preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Chair Hong prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to either? Provide. By testify either for or against this application. Seeing none, commissioners, any questions or comments or a type of action?
Motion to approve transfer application number two four dash zero four one nine two.
It's been moved and seconded to approve transfer agenda item number two, transfer application number two four dash zero four one nine two. Any objections or reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye, transfer application number two four dash zero four one nine two is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number three. Transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero three from Brains International USA DBA Gukaku.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair and members of the Commission, Neo Gotta appearing on behalf of Brains International USA. Uh, doing business as Yukaku, appearing with me is Todd Nakamura, uh, General Manager. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Miss Hara.
Thank you, Mister Vice Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters and support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the record, a summary of the June fifth. Preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Chair Hong prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify either for or against this agenda item? Seeing none. Um commissioners, any types of questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero three.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero three. Any objections or reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye, transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero three is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number four, transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero five. From Rains International. DBA Gukaku.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair and Members of the Commission, Neo Gotta appearing on behalf of Rains International USA. Uh, doing business as Gukaku. Appearing with me is Todd Nakamura, General Manager, we have no changes to the investigative report.
Miss Hara.
Thank you, Mister Vice Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters and support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the June fifth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Chair Hong prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide testimony before or against? Um, agenda item number four. Seeing none, any type of actions or any questions from the commissioners?
Motion to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero five.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve agenda item number four, transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero five. Any objections or reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye, transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero five is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number five, transfer application number two five dash zero one zero one nine. From Rains International DBA Gukaku.
Good afternoon, Chair and Members of the Commission, Neo Gotta appearing on behalf of Rains International, doing business as Gukaku. Appearing with me is Todd Nakamura, we have no changes to the investigative report.
Miss Hara.
Thank you, Mister Vice Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters and support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the June fifth. Preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Chair Hong prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide testimony on agenda item number five, transfer application number two five dash zero one zero one nine? Seeing none, commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one zero one nine.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve. Agenda item number five, transfer application number two five dash zero one zero one nine. Any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye, transfer application number two five dash zero one zero one nine is approved.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to agenda item number six. Application number two four dash zero zero four six seven from Roberts Hawaii Showtime, DBA Magic of Polynesia.
Good afternoon, this Chair members of the Commission, Keith Kyuchi representing the applicant Roberts. Why Showtime Inc., there's a supplemental licensing investigative report dated June third. Which adds in the the dance floor to the proposed premises as well as informs the commission. Of the trade name from Magic of Polynesia to Limelight.
Thank you, Miss Hara.
Thank you, Mister Vice Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters and support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the April twenty fourth. Preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Kunda prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide testimony for agenda item? Number six, app transfer, application number two four dash zero zero four six seven. Seeing none, commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve application number two four dash zero zero four six seven.
It's been moved and seconded to approve agenda item number six, application number two four dash zero zero four six seven, any nasal or. Um reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye, transfer up, sorry. Agenda item number six, application number two four dash zero zero four six seven is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seven. Application number two four dash zero one five nine four from JFC International. EBA JFC International.
Uh, Mister Vice Chair and Commissioners, with respect to agenda item number seven, we've uh received a request from council for the applicant. Asking that this matter be uh continued to next week. I'll ask that to continue this matter to the July third meeting, public hearing kept open.
Okay, so we need a motion to continue the item to.
July, July third.
To July third with the public hearing kept open.
So moved as stated.
Second, been moved and seconded to. Move the tra- move this uh agenda item to the July third meeting, public hearing kept open. Any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye, it shall be moved to the next um one week from now. Calling agenda item number eight, application number two four dash zero one eight five seven. From Restaurant Hope LLC DBA Lady Lee.
Afternoon, Mister Vice Chair Commissioners, Adam Miller appearing on behalf of the applicant, uh, to my right. Is Dustin Grable, the LLC manager for the applicant.
Miss Hara.
Thank you, Mister Vice Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters and support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the April twenty fourth. Preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Kunda prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify therefore against this application? Seeing none, uh commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve application number two four dash zero one eight five seven.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two four dash zero one eight five seven. Any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye, application number two four dash zero one eight five seven is approved. Calling agenda item number nine. Application number two four dash zero one nine seven eight from Little Plum LLC, DBA Little Plum.
Afternoon, Adam Miller on behalf of the applicant alongside Dustin Grable, applicant's LLC manager.
Miss Hara.
Uh, thank you, Mister Vice Chair and Commissioners, this application has received one written protest, zero letters and support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the April twenty fourth. Preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Kunda prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide testimony either for or against application number two four dash zero one nine seven eight? Seeing none, commissioners, uh, questions or a type of action?
Council, have you seen the the uh copy of the protest?
Yes, we did receive copy.
Can you elaborate or? Talk about that?
Uh, we share in her concern for the neighborhood, Mister Grable's children. Tend Elementary School, I think within a block. Um, been serving in the valley for approximately a year on various temporary. Uh catering and special licenses without incident.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve application number two four dash zero one nine seven eight.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two four dash zero one nine. Seven eight, any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Agenda item number nine, application number two four dash zero one nine seven eight is approved. Calling agenda item number ten. Application number two four dash zero three nine six nine from Natsunoya Tea House.
Good afternoon, Chair and Members of the Commission, Brigley Shilpa, raising your hand on behalf of the applicant. On my right is Lawrence, uh, LAU R E N C E Fujiwara, F U J I W A R. R A Junior, who is a member manager for the applicant. No changes to the investigator's report, we have received the protest, however, the protest was very ambiguous, I don't know what the protest was all about.
Okay, Miss Hara.
Thank you, Mister Vice Chair and Commissioners, this application has received one written protest, four letters and support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the April twenty fourth. Preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Kunda prior to the public hearing.
Okay, so we do have two individuals that have listed um that would like to provide testimony in regards to this agenda item. They're going to call them first, and then we will continue to ask if there's any additional individuals that are in the audience who would like to testify. So the first person that we have listed is. Willa. The Neil. Donnelly, my apologies. So if you can come up to the front, they're going to swear you in. And you'll have a three minute timer to um provide your testimony.
You need me to stand?
Um, you can sit, that's fine.
You can be seated. If you'll raise your right hand, please. Do you swear that the testimony you give at today's hearing will be the truthful truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, thank you.
So, go ahead, Miss Donnelly.
Thank you, members. Uh, the reason for my opposition is number one, the restaurant is located in a residential area. Where we have families um that live there, people who walk through the streets um at different times of the day or night. There is, as far as I know, there's no commercial um. Uh zoning there, but what it, what's fearful is the um, what the traffic flow will be like. The fact that with alcoholic beverages, you raise the um, the significantly the safety factors. That could incede or hurt our community and the basically. We live in a residential community and the streets are very narrow. Parts are parked all over the place. Intoxicated people trying to get out of the parking lot or walking to their cars. Could cause a whole lot of problems, there can be injuries not only to community people, but to the people visiting the area. Who are going to the um restaurant, the restaurant will be making um. A profit off of, off of this, whereas the community, what do we get out of it? We don't get anything as far as I know. Um, we have to give up safety, we have to give up parking because all the parking on the street usually is gone. There's lack of freedom to be able to do things because if you leave, when you come back, you may not have parking. Um, there have been problems with people parking in unimproved walkways which serve as um a walkway from the bus stop. Down to Kamali Street. Um, and that is used by older people. Um, the area that I have concern about uh is would serve as a. A safe place for people to um embark and disembark. But overall, the opposition is, it's in a residential community and. That is in conflict with what you would find in a commercial community.
Commissioners, any questions for um the? Miss Donald.
Yeah, Natsunoya, to my knowledge, has been there forever and a day.
Yes, it has been.
They have a large parking lot that usually has parking. Uh attendance.
Obviously, you've not been there um on party days, which are usually. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And as far as I understand from what my research told me, there may be parking on that area for about eighty cars. And after that, the other hundred fifty that show up are going to be parking all over the neighborhood. The researchers I saw um that I read. Said that there's at least room for um five parties, one of the rooms can hold three hundred people. And then the other rooms are smaller, but nonetheless, that's a lot more than people who can park in the parking lot. Um, again. Our safety in the community, you know, we we're giving it up while this person is making a profit off with.
Has it posed problems in the past?
It has. It has, and where I live, I can see everything, I can see ambulances coming um in two different directions. I've seen buses and large trucks unable to pass because of the crowd. I've seen long lines of people on both ends of Kamali, I mean, excuse me, Bakonani. Um, trying to enter the parking lot and then. When they can't because it's full, then people are circulating and try to cram their cars in wherever they can, including in front of. Um. Uh. Fire hydrants and in stop signs that are marked, you know, with the sign and stop. So, I mean, when people are coming around the corner, if you're going from coming up Makonani. At turning into Kamali, people are flying and we're just lucky that nobody's been injured yet.
Has any other complaints been registered with the management and owners?
Uh. I think um in the past, my mother has tried to seek assistance in relationship to damage to the um. The fence that wasn't caused by us and she was basically blown off.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. So basically, it's a residential area.
Well, I'm familiar with the area.
Any other questions? So. So one thing I will say state, right? Re- being whatever zoning it is, residential. Or industrial or any of those things, that is not part of something we look at in the sense of the zoning, okay? We are looking at whether or not an establishment would be able to provide the ability to serve alcohol. Um, I do believe the Natsunoya Tea House, even though it has not been had a liquor license in the past, I do believe that it has been a BYOB establishment. Which I'm assuming people maybe doing their own thing at that point. But. The zoning portion is not something we would be looking at in the zoning type of thing. Just so.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so basically, the safety of the people in the community is, is of no importance.
Safety of the community is important. The zoning portion that you've raised, that it's a residential area. That's all I'm saying, we don't have control over the zoning.
Okay, so I made that statement because I wanted clarification about what it is we're speaking about.
Hmm.
That's all.
Okay. So Mister. So does your, I guess the question would be, do you have some responses for the testifier or your clients?
I would, if the other person's going to testify, maybe we could just take.
Okay, I'll take it at the end.
So, because I don't want to be repetitive.
Yeah, let's do that.
Understood. Okay, thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Hmm, the next person that's on the list. I'm going to say it's Cora Yamamoto. Please have a seat and then um, Miss Hara here will.
Um, and you swear that the testimony you give at today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Vice Chair or Chair?
I'm the Vice Chair, but I'm trying the meeting today, thank you.
I'm just going to figure out from there. I'm Cora Yamamoto, I grew up on Cooler Street. About six houses in from Natsunoya, you know, breakdown, uh, Lilena comes up before the car. And so I grew up there, I remember in the early days, the traffic, the parking was horrible because. People were parking legally on our street, which is very narrow and it was pretty much impassable. Um, but that has changed over the years, so now no problem where I am. Um, but um, you know, it it's a. A real treasure uh to me um in the neighborhood and for. For our state because it's really the last tea house that's operating. And there's a lot of tradition and, you know, I, during the pandemic, all the neighbors really. I think came together to try to make sure that it survived, they were doing bento out of the parking lot, all of that. And we're very happy to see that it was up and running again. Um. And with all due respect to Miss Donnelly, I understand the problems about parking especially. Um, you know, it's, it does seem to be in insufficient when there are lots of parties going on at the same time. And if something could be worked out with the neighbors, find an alternate site where the ballet could take the cars to, because it really is a. A hazard, um, because people do park on the corner um under, you know, before the. Natsunoya Tea House and we've, we've had really dicey situations on the land of. That being said, um, uh, the question about safety in the neighborhood. Um, I, you know, it it has been BYOB for many years, I've had parties there. We've had to get people to be bartenders and, you know, pour up our, our wine and our beer. And uh, you know, people don't. In in our situations, don't overdo it, but I can see the problem possibly, but it has been BYOB. Um, so, and I, I don't think that would change very much, um, just the question of another revenue. Resource for the, for the tea house, um, so I guess my particular concern is that. Not to know you'll be able to work with the community as this develops and address any concerns that may come up. Um, and I should also mention, I'm, I'm speaking as a private resident. Um, I was away for um, like thirty, forty years after college, I came back ten years ago. So I've seen the differences, I went through the pandemic too. And uh, I hope that there are many more years of. Not to know you're being around and serving the community and being a good neighbor. Um, and also want to mention that I'm not wearing my hat as a neighborhood boardman member, but if residents want to come and. Um, you know, voice concerns as time goes on, we're available to. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for the testifier before um the house court step down?
Thank you.
Thank you. So before um I go on, I'm going to ask if there's anyone else in the audience would like to provide testimony or agenda item number ten. Okay, seeing none. So. Any comments or concern uh responses to the questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's another tea house has been in business since nineteen twenty-one, over a hundred years. Is the last tea house business. And I believe on this island, I don't know if statewide, but probably statewide. Um, it has been BYOB up to this point. I think the the move to get them to by them to get a liquor license actually is a better thing because it brings the consumption into, you know, for more and more control. Not that they weren't monitoring before this, but they were. But but now they can really monitor, you know, who is consuming and how much they're consuming at any party. As far as parking is concerned, yes, they do have a parking at sizable lot. And these valleys, parking valleys to maximize the use, I think um based upon my personal experience, you know, we've told, I've had numerous parties there, just recently back about a month ago, I had my son's graduation party there for medical school and, you know, we we tell people, well, you know, remember parking is limited. If you can carpool or if you can ride share, um, you know, and be mindful, you know, I obviously the applicant is mindful of the community and wants to be a good good neighbor also. And I know in working with them, they strive to, you know, try to keep that keep the neighborhood, you know, happy. Um, really, um that's all I can say at this point. I mean, again, one last thing from a personal standpoint, I, you know, as I as I keep growing up. Maybe dating myself about fifty fifty years ago, I remember going to the house parties and stuff and it was, you know, we went to different places, it was a great time. It was a very, you know, a family event and I can say that moving forward to not so any event that we've out there, it's always been family, you know, it's always been um we're pretty much under control. You you know, you're dealing with, I think, a different kind of crowd too and and with understanding that you're not gonna have too many, you know, wild parties there, that kind of thing. Um, and I think they are mindful of that. And the owner's definitely is, you know, understand that and knows that they have to keep things under control. But I I don't think it's really a problem noise wise or as far as people getting, you know, overly inviting. Also, you know, now if somebody does over invite, they can uh call me the rideshare. And because they have the parking lot there, they can leave the cars with no, you know, no problem.
So, is there is there any plan of talking to your client, any plan to address the parking? You obviously heard that the concerns there. Um, is there anything else that could be done or how could you help uh address some of the concerns of the neighbors?
Yes, Commissioner, just just that, you know, what what I've been told is that, you know, they are trying to work with taxi companies, I again, rideshirts, et cetera, telling the customers um to tell, you know, who's ever attending that, you know, be mindful of the fact that parking is needed and also be mindful of the neighborhood, do not impose yourself in a manner that is offensive or, you know, in a no parking area, et cetera, blocking driveway.
Do you have any agreements for off-site parking with your valet?
Oh, let me stir up, draw, I just, uh, we reached out to several locations. Uh, we haven't had a response back. Um, so we've been constantly trying to reach out to more, you know, I mean, we can only go so far because then it doesn't make sense yet. So.
It would seem like for a small party, obviously you don't need to, but if at graduation season or at other high peak times where there are multiple parties at the same place, it's kind of obvious that you're gonna have a parking issue despite whatever. You're gonna tell the guests arriving and it would uh behoove you that, you know, the next time you come in front of us, that uh we don't hear a lot about parking issues.
You know, I think, I'll be honest. I think wherever you go, there's parking issues. Um, and we're trying to do our best to, you know, keep it at a at a way we can control it, but people in Hawaii like to drive, no matter what we tell them to carpool, use Lyft, Uber, we we um stress that. But, you know, people like to drive and I I guess once you I guess the next generation, if they've they start to use Lyft and Uber. I I, well, they already do, so I'm hoping that that's gonna continue the trend, yeah.
Logistically, I would say that knowing the location of the facility and availability of, you know, third-party lots in in that area, it's very difficult, you know, being up on Haleba Heights and or Kamamea Heights then. Depending on which which way you look at it and I'm just thinking off the top of my head, where where the closest place would be and I I can't think of any place, you know, Kamamea Shopping Center.
And we just gotta, we gotta think of, be a little more creative because what I'm hearing, sitting here is like, oh, we're trying everything, but they're not gonna listen and that's all we can do. And if I'm a resident there, I don't know if I can accept that.
Yeah, understood, Commissioner. We will continue to address the issue as much as we can. Again, we'll we'll continue to emphasize to people trying to carpool, um, use whatever maybe.
I think there's multiple large parties, each party could have designated X amount of stalls, which would fill the lot and the rest is turned away. If me, we have to kind of think creatively.
Yeah, the the first uh capacity of facility is three hundred people, just just for why I have the information.
I I have a question, but first a comment. Um, been around since nineteen twenty-one, so I certainly commend you for your stick-to-it-iveness and surviving for all those years. So congratulations on that and good luck as you move forth. You know, relative to parking, I don't think that, you know, our our purview of 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 analyzing liquor licenses is gonna be impacted, obviously. I mean, you're at capacity, you've got uh, you know, uh, capacity issues. Are are you aware of any incidents, safety incidents as a result of your your parking issues that have occurred?
Um, usually HPD will come and monitor and give out tickets where there's they're not supposed to park. A lot of times the neighbors would call us and will ask the people who park there to go, you know, um, remove their car. So it's it's so hard because a lot of times our valley, the valley service that we use now, um they're kind of like our deep, I mean, like, you know, they'll monitor where the cars are parked. They'll tell them that, hey, this is a no parking zone, but they cannot enforce it, yeah. So we we, you know, they will tell them that, you know, HPDs will come and uh ticket or tow. And a lot of times they said, they don't care. So and so it's like, you know, what can I do, yeah?
Sure.
I mean.
Yeah, as long as you're making those steps and I think as you heard from the commissioners here, that being a good neighbor is important, right? Um, you're in a residential area and, you know, you certainly understand the complexities of operating your business and 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 where you're at. Um, but you don't know of any incident, safety incidents that have occurred as a result.
Not, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Now, you've operated BYOB for this entire time. Now you're now you're moving into getting a liquor license. Can you just give us a comment as to what behoove you to move in that direction?
Um, what what do you mean, like?
Like, is it for profitability or trying to survive and therefore you need?
Profitability, but but we wanna be responsible, yeah. We see that, you know, like people bring too much sometimes. And they consume too much, so now we can regulate it, yeah, more. And I think a lot of parties, they're they're gearing towards, they they ask us if we sell alcohol because I guess it's becoming burdensome for them to bring up things, have it all ice down. Um, so I think a lot of them want us to sell and I think that would limit of how much they can drink too because now they're paying for it, yeah, so.
Yeah, I would think that nobody would fault you for wanting to survive, right? And so taking those steps, I think, is necessary to ensure that you're employing people, providing a good service for customers in the in the area. And I'm happy to hear that the part of the rationale is that you're looking at a level of more control over uh consumption. So thank you for your comments.
I would be uh inclined when we come to the vote to vote yes, but I would like to hear back from you in six to twelve months in terms of how the operations are going and how the parking situation over the party seasons about the address.
So what I'm hearing is that and I understand part of the argument, but granting a liquor license with allowing you to sell beverages in a more controlled manner and perhaps limit the amount of liquor that these people, outsiders or uh, your customers can bring in uh into the facility, which could lead to inebriated driving and stuff like that and carousing and noise making. So, I mean, I see that as a control factor versus uh, I mean, it could be a profit factor too, but council raised the initial argument that it's a matter of control and you seem to verify that as well, yeah. Uh, because apparently all the issues and concerns in the past was all under BYOB, right? So if if the commission does not approve the license, I don't think the problem gonna go away.
True, true.
Right? Well, as I see it now. But you're act, you're promoting or you're proposing a method of control. So you have a means in which to, you could address parking, you address the amount of cons- consuming uh liquor consuming there, but would you also be selling uh soft drinks and beverages as well?
Yes.
So, you know, you could perhaps reduce the alcohol consumption?
Probably, yeah. For for us, I think, you know, we're gonna lose some customers because we're 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 now we're selling alcohol. And I think the customers that we're gonna lose are the ones that really abuse the system. I mean, they bring too much. So I think in a way, you know, to me, I look at it as, all right, we we're gonna eliminate the part that has a liability, a greater liability. And now we can control it and manage it in a more proper way, yeah.
No, I I think that's fairly responsible, yeah. Uh, because I have personally seen huge ice chests.
Yes.
Coming there and that's dangerous.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Wh- what are your hours of operation?
So our lunch is from ten to two and dinner is from five to nine thirty.
Reasonable, and and parties end at nine thirty.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, they they're they're like, you know, packing up and going, yeah, yeah. Uh, because I understand we used to go later before, but, you know, it's a residential and I get it. You know, I I wouldn't want to live next to someplace where it's making noise at ten, you know, about, so.
So, my comments are going to be very similar to our prior commissioners. I'm glad to hear that you're willing to take the um initiative to now wanna watch and control the amount of alcohol that's going out there. But I also think that based on a lot of the comments that were made by the community, there's issues of whether or not they have some way to voice their concerns to you folks. And someone look into it or take advantage of figuring out how to do it. So I would say this on my end. If the commission is inclined to approve this, I'm going to be requesting that you come back to see us six months after this and then six months more after this. Because we wanna see how things are going, but I'm also gonna want you to put together a list or a sheet that has if a community member calls you, when they called you, what they called you for, if it was for parking, what did you do to mitigate that? Because honestly, I get it, it's in a residential area, there's a lot of par places to park, but to me, you're not really telling me anything you're planning to do to take care of a parking situation that we all know is bad based on the size of the lot, based on the number of people you are going to probably have for parties and where they're going to park. Right? So, I'm gonna want you to have some type of list, so if the community does call you, you figure out, okay, what is it, where are they at, what kind of car, let me go figure out what I can do. Because we're gonna, I'm gonna ask for that when you come back in six months. Because if you have like fifty people calling you or sixty people calling you about parking in front of their place or damaging their property, we're gonna have to determine how that is.
I would interject, I was asked, Mr. Fujiwar, prior to this, Mr. Fujiwar, how many calls have you had generally per month of a parking?
Probably one at the most, two maybe.
Okay.
I don't know, we don't, it it's like.
I just wanna make that clear for the commission, so that when we come, when you come back, we have kind of a standard.
Yeah, yeah.
What 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 you've done is, can you tell them, I I just don't want, you know, calls coming in who just basically gonna bump up the numbers unnecessarily.
True, but I also want to say that if you had enough people come here to testify because this, your hearing notice went out, to say that there's a parking problem, they should have the ability to call you.
Understood.
And put something down, right? That's all, that's all it is.
I just wanna stop in a bit, that currently is right now without a without a license versus
Right.
what happens at there. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
So I have no other questions, but I'm open for a form of action or continued questions?
Well, I mean, I'm gonna make a motion to approve application number two four dash zero three nine six nine. Commissioner, would you like to add any provisions to that?
I'm going to add to that motion that um you will need to come back to see us six months from now. And then again, after twelve months. And we would like to see a log that would be listed showing if people called for parking or if they called for any other type of situations or issues, and then you can bring that to us and we can look that over.
May I add on that you might be proactive too, if you have special duty officers who when you get calls that they can clear right away to keep it, keep that area safe because some people do go over onto the roadway and of course that can be a danger, but if you demonstrate proactiveness, that will help your situation.
And 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 when a um complaint comes forward, if you could tell us what the
What's your remedy was?
Well, and how many people, how how, how many parties were involved at the time, if there were parties? Or it's just a normal night?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the motion.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two four dash zero three nine six nine with our um verbiage and additions and provisions. Any nays or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two four dash zero three nine six nine is approved with those provisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number eleven. Application number two five dash zero zero seven one seven from Tiki's Grill Grill and Bar LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairs. Mission members Kenneth who appeared for the applicant. To my right is William Tobin, T O B I N, is the member of the applicant. More further changes to the investigative.
Ms. Heri.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the April twenty-fourth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Kandiv prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to either provide testimony either for or against application number two five dash zero zero seven one seven? Seeing none, commissioners, any type of questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero zero seven one seven.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero zero seven one seven. Any nays or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two five dash zero zero seven one seven is approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Sorry, we do twelve first and then the add-on, right?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item number twelve. Application number two five dash zero zero seven six two from Makaha Dolphin Resort LLC.
Again, good aft- good afternoon. Chair members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the applicant. Uh, we're gonna request this be continued one week. The affidavit of mailing was one day late.
Okay, so before, we do have some, we do have someone in the audience that has um put in to um be a testifier in regards to this agenda item. So we are going to allow the individual to testify and give their statements. And because we will be asking or move being the agenda item one week from now. So, is there a Carlo? Unloque, please come forward. You're gonna be sworn in and we're gonna allow you to provide your testimony because technically we are going to be moving. The hearing one week later, that way you don't have to come back again.
Can you raise your right hand, please? You swear that the testimony given today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Yes, so. Aloha, my name is Carlo Tanjaku, K A R L O T A N J U A K I O. I'm a resident and homeowner within a five hundred feet of Makaha Valley Country Club. Um I firmly oppose this application for a liquor license. Um mainly because of noise complaints and also. The road, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Makaha Valley Road or the the road that goes there. It's very windy, there's no street lights, and there's elevation increases and decreases. Um and there have been incidents of hit runs and fatalities within the last year on that road. There's also no sidewalks on that road at all, and there's tourists, there's residents, elderly people, students walking up and down that road. At all times of the day. And what I understand is liquor license is an applica- or application is for up to two in the morning. Um over the last few years, uh when they have started to have parties and things, they have um not been a good neighbor. Uh so there's excessive noise, lights. Um I've also, and it's not just limited to. Those parties uh in the evening, there's also landscaping that goes on at four in the morning. And we've complained alongside the neighbors multiple times over the years. And um nothing has, their behavior has not changed. So for to me and some of the neighbors, we did not receive these notices. If you can't abide by uh noise complaints that are just for landscaping. At four in the morning multiple times in the week over the last few years. Or construction noise, what makes us think that you're gonna be able to properly manage a liquor license? That's all.
Any commissioners, any questions for a testifier?
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you for um providing testimony. Um just so you know, right, we will be moving the hearing one week later. We will take your testimony into consideration at the time next week when we do do. Uh hearing, if you wish again to come and testify again, that is up to you.
Sure, glad to.
Okay.
And then holding, this is actually.
Yeah, we're gonna actually hold the, so can they testify again? I I'm not sure.
Um typically, you've not permitted that, but I I think that's within your discretion.
Okay.
So if you have other neighbors that would like.
Yeah.
But testify that might.
Even if they were not within five hundred feet and did not receive a letter? Or is it only within five hundred feet and they received a letter? Because my home is one of the closest to the country club, and I'm not sure that. They would have gotten, they, I've asked and they have not received. Letters.
Yeah, a- a- at a public meeting, anyone is permitted to provide testimony. It's just in terms of certain counts, which I'm not gonna provide today cuz this matter will be. Uh continued to uh the July third meeting in terms of what is considered uh quote unquote valid protest from. Uh someone within five hundred feet of the proposed premises, but anyone is permitted to provide.
Yeah.
Testimony on any matter on the agenda.
Okay.
But but there's also a a clause that if fifty percent of the people within five hundred feet are in opposition. Then that overrides the uh.
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah.
My my goal here today is to help them understand the complaints of the neighbors and. Get them to stop making noise at certain times of the day so that they can prove that they can manage a liquor license properly, and it is. Um a concern when that road is very dark and we're gonna have additional traffic that is. Potentially integrated, and we need to just be mindful of not just my, me and my family, but the guests that come in there. And they're driving all the way back to town on Farrington Highway, et cetera, so. We just wanna help them understand because we have filed protest reports and nothing has changed, so we have. Lots of documentation.
Um so I guess the question would be for Mister Kiuchi, since the testifier is here, is there any comments you'd like to make?
I'd like to know the when the complaints work, and there's a huge difference because this property has changed hands. Three times over the last five years. So I think the context is important. Um the management of property has changed. Uh right now, it's a Korean company after another Korean company had it, so. And the managers are very different, so I'd like to know, i- if you can tell me what what the context was, what the timing.
Sure, the most recent complaint was about a month ago.
Okay.
Yeah, and over the last few years, it's been on and off, and it has been me uh and different neighbors. Um so I'm not sure who the. When the owner ownership changed exactly, but it is very recent and it still continues.
Well, the ownership now is the same as the ownership would have been. Like a year ago, but before that it was different. So and and I know at the tail end of the previous ownership is owned by Pacific Links. Pacific Links went through a bankruptcy, so the management had issues. So so this way, but.
Hmm.
Okay. That helps, thank you.
So the complaints that you identify or the risk that you identified in your letter. These are all, and the most recent one a month ago, these are all liquor related complaints?
No, I don't think they have a liquor license now, but they're noise complaints.
Because it's just noise complaints based on consumption?
Yeah, properties had a liquor license for the last twenty plus years, it's. Pacific Links had it for nine years before that. Jeff Stone owned it, so it's had a liquor license all this time.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify for the record whether this is a liquor related complaint that the commission should consider or not. So.
I I'm actually, what concerns me the most is the uh noise at night.
Okay.
Because the noise during the day is not a liquor related noise. I think the neighbors have every right to complain and starting, starting up the morgue at four AM, I can see why there would be upset.
Yeah, I just wanted to have it distinguished for the record.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Make sure we don't have any other questions, but thank you for your testimony. Um but we do need a motion to um.
Could you just confirm there's no one else?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so sorry about that. Before um I continue on, we are going to confirm that is there anyone else in the audience? That wants to testify either for or against agenda item number twelve. Application number two five dash zero zero seven six two. Okay. Seeing none, we will need a motion to um. Continue this matter to the July third meeting, public hearing held open.
Moved as stated.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to of to um sorry. Continue this matter to the July third meeting, holding the public hearing kept open. For agenda item number twelve, application number two five dash zero zero seven six two. Any nays or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, this will be continued to July third, public hearing held open. And then we're gonna take the unrelated matter, we're gonna call out of order. Agenda item number fifty five A. Which is request number two five dash zero four three 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 from Keith Kiuchi on behalf of. Makaha Golf and Re- uh Resort LLC.
Uh thank you again, good afternoon, Chair of Members of Commission, this is a request to extend a special license which you granted. At the uh first meeting in June. At present, the special license ends on June thirty. Uh because the public hearing was continued, we would ask for seven more days, and I have the check in my hand. Joe give to Misery at the end of the meeting.
So we need a um commissioners, any types of questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve request number two five dash zero four three three three.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve agenda item number fifty five A, request number two five dash zero four three three three. Any nays or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, request number two five dash zero four three 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 is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, going back on to our regular agenda, calling agenda item number thirteen. Application number two five dash zero one four one three from the Ona Brew Brewery LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners, Robin Meltron on behalf of the applicant. Leona Brewery LLC, and to my right is Eddie Kim, the manager and member of the applicant. We have reviewed the report and there are no amendments or changes.
Miss Haro.
Thank you, Mister Vice Chair and Commissioner. This application has received two written protests or letters in support. Applicant's statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the April twenty fourth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Kandev prior to the public hearing.
Okay, so before I open it up to the audience, we do have one individual that has listed um to testify for this agenda item. Is there a Doug Keikona? Please step forward, you're gonna be able to sit here, are gonna be sworn in and you'll be given three minutes for a testimony.
Thank you, we read. Do you swear that the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
As I do.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, aloha commissioners, and then the uh different commission territory. Um I speak in support of uh the uh.
Oh, could you provide your name?
Oh, excuse me. Douglas Keikona, I reside at uh five one six five Baycomby Highway. The property immediately to the Canio's side of the Russian Lion Restaurant. Um I speak in support to uh this application for uh. Doctor Kim to uh be able to produce his own uh product on site. Um. The overall, it's overall environment and atmosphere of the restaurant has been, you know, since he has taken ownership and made major investments into improving. The structure and the business, you know, has been a compliment to the to the community. And uh I've been in support of of him and his family, his organization. And um I think that his uh interests and his business and enterprise has been a compliment to the community. Without with discretion. You know, um he's operated within uh, you know, slowly, you know, ramped up business as, you know. He grew a customer base and stuff, and I was, you know, I was uh. I've always been witness to that, I've seen the, I've been there, I lived there for twenty five years. You know, and my family has been there since quite a while, but we've seen the coaching lion, you know, you know, just uh. Evan, you know, Evan Flo as far as the business and uh just operate, operate the restaurant altogether, but I feel it uh. Uh Doctor Kim, Eddie Kim is a. Uh made a a good investment toward the, you know. A positive uh presence and dining experience for his his customers and uh. I always uh been supportive of him since he took ownership recently, so.
Thank you. Any um questions or comments for the testifier?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So before we move on, I will open it to um the audience, is there anyone in the audience would like to testify either for or against? Uh this agenda item number thirteen, application number two five dash zero one four one three. Seeing none, uh commissioners, any type questions or a type of action?
Smelter, you wanna address the other two protests?
Yeah. So um the protests, they had concerns with noise and um. Main mainly noise, but this application is actually not open to the public. It will not have service or anything, it's mostly to produce their own liquor to be sold by the restaurant. So it's really only a thousand square feet, it's not open to the public, there's no, no customers, no food will be served, it's just strictly for. Um the production of their own type of liquor. And then, oh, sorry, one more thing, sorry. The restaurant has been in operation for over a year with no incident or complaints about noise or anything of that nature.
I don't have any other questions. Motion to approve application number two five dash zero one four one three.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero one four one three, any nays or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, agenda item number thirteen, application number two five dash zero one four one three is approved.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to agenda item number fourteen. Specials. Uh moving on to agenda under item number fourteen, applications number two five dash zero two eight three four dash one. Through two five dash zero two eight three four dash one one from V S E Capital Grill, Y K K LLC.
Mister Commissioners, uh Devon Nakoba representing uh Capital Grill, Y K K LLC, to my left. Is Deborah Espino, she's the VP of Business Development for Union Mac, and uh this is her Vice President, Dimitri.
No liquor license for.
Or he will not be serving no liquor. Um uh we do uh have a request if possible, um I just got noticed today. That they won't actually be uh ready for operation until the twenty first of this month, uh sorry, of of July. Um so if we can make it effective July twenty first, that's fine, but I understand that this already sort of has been. You know, it's been published and everything.
Um be- because you have five present, um the the commission would have the ability to entertain a motion to um. To amend the agenda, to amend the request and also the agenda. So can you?
Yeah, motion. Motion to amend applica- uh agenda item number fourteen, application. Numbers twenty five dash zero two eight three four dash one. To two five dash zero two eight three four dash one one to amend the dates. To July twenty first, twenty twenty five to August twenty first, twenty twenty five.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda for agenda item number fourteen. Um changing the effective date to starting on July first, twenty twenty five, running through August twenty first. Twenty twenty five. Any nays or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, the agenda has been amended as read.
Thank you so much.
Now, going back to the motion of the agenda item itself.
It's Mister Chair, uh motion to approve. Application number two five dash zero two eight three four dash one to two five dash zero two eight three four. Dash one one inclusively and as amended.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve applications number two five dash zero two eight three four dash one. Through two five dash zero two eight three four dash one one as amended, any nays or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, amended applications two five dash zero two eight three four dash one through two five dash. Zero two eight three four dash one one are approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go.
Okay. Calling agenda item number fifteen, application number two five dash zero two nine three six from Coles in Catering by Cineblond Inc.
Sheila waiting patiently.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Sheila Elcano, E L C A N O, General Manager for Coles and Catering by Cineblond. For this application, this is a graduation party with approximately two hundred and twenty guests. The bar will be in the ballroom with two HPD special duties on site.
And I'll make my normal usual comment for all of the Cineblond Inc.'s catering applications that please, as this graduation season starts. Now parties are going on for graduations, weddings, and first birthdays. Let's make sure we keep an eye out for passing out in the courtyard as you are licensing the courtyard space.
Noted, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions or a type of action, commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero two nine three six.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero two nine three six. Any nays or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, application number two five dash zero two nine three six is approved. Calling agenda item number sixteen, application number two five dash zero two nine three seven from Coles in Catering by Cineblond Inc.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Sheila Elcano, E L C A N O, General Manager for Coles and Catering by Cineblond. For this application, we have a graduation party, approximately one hundred and seventy five guests. The bar will be in the ballroom and one HPD special duty on site.
We share as a form of action or questions?
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero two nine three seven.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero two nine three seven. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero two nine three seven. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two five dash zero two nine three seven is approved. Going to agenda item number seventeen, application number two five dash zero two nine three eight. From Coles and Catering by Cineblan Inc.
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Sheila O'Connell, General Manager for Coles and Catering by Cineblan. For this application, we have a birthday and graduation party with approximately a hundred and fifty guests. The bar will be in the ballroom and one HPD on site.
Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero two nine three eight.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero two nine three eight. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two five dash zero two nine three eight is approved. Going on to agenda item number eighteen, application number two five dash zero two nine three nine. From Coles and Catering by Cineblan Inc.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Sheila O'Connell, General Manager for Coles and Catering by Cineblan. For this application, we have a first birthday party, approximately two hundred guests. The bar will be inside and two HPDs on site.
Commissioners, a form of action or any questions?
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero two nine three nine.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero two nine three nine. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two five dash zero two nine three nine is approved. Calling agenda item number nineteen, application number two five dash zero two nine four zero from Coles and Catering by Cineblan Inc.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Sheila O'Connell, General Manager for Coles and Catering by Cineblan. For this application, we have a wedding reception with approximately two hundred fifty guests. The bar will be in the courtyard with two HPD special duty on site.
Commissioners, any types of action or questions?
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero two nine four zero.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero two nine four zero. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two five dash zero two nine four zero is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty, application number two five dash zero two nine four one from Coles and Catering by Cineblan Inc.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Sheila O'Connell, General Manager for Coles and Catering by Cineblan. For this application, we have a fiftieth birthday party with approximately a hundred guests. The bar will be in the ballroom and one HPD will be on site.
Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
No.
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero two nine four one.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero two nine four one. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two five dash zero two nine four one is approved.
Any commissions?
Be busy July.
Yeah. Alright, moving on to agenda item number twenty-one, application number two five dash zero three one three five dash one. Through two five dash zero three one three five dash one six from National Guard Conference Corporation of Hawaii Inc.
Good afternoon Chair, members of Commission Craig and Michelle, pageant, authorized, bear on behalf of the applicant. To receive investigative support, I have no changes there too.
Commissioners, any questions or a form of action? I guess, so my biggest question right is. It says over there that you need all of these fingerprints and these things. You're gonna be able to get everything before the license will be issued, okay?
Yes.
Maybe.
It's not gonna be issued, you know?
Yeah, no, I guess, we just wanna make sure it's over there. That's the main thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Everything contingent, right?
Yeah. Yep.
Good.
Okay.
Understood.
Motion to approve application numbers two five dash zero three one three five dash one to. Two five dash zero three one three five dash one six inclusive.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve applications number two five dash zero three one three five dash one. Through two five dash zero three one three five dash one six inclusive. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Applications two five dash zero three one three five dash one. Through two five dash zero three one three five dash one six are approved.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, calling agenda item number twenty-two, applications number two five dash zero three two. One four dash one through. Two five dash zero three two one four dash one three three. From Sunrise Shack Corporation, DBA Sunrise Shack Kailua.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Christina O'Hira, on behalf of the applicant, to my right is Travis Smith. Uh, last name is Smelth S M I T H and he is the CEO of the corporation. We reviewed the investigative report and we don't have any changes as supplemented.
Uh Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve application numbers two five dash zero three two one four dash one. To two five dash zero three two one four dash one three three inclusive.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve applications number two five dash zero three two one four dash one. Through two five dash zero three two one four dash one three three. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Applications two five dash zero three two one four dash one through two five dash zero three two. One four dash one three three are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item. Number twenty-three, application number two five dash zero three three one zero from Free Spirits LLC. Free Spirits LLC.
Good afternoon Commissioner and Chair, Matthew Choi, manager member for Free Spirits LLC. This is for Night Market, the first bar that's near Cook Street. I have no changes to the investigative report.
Are you running the same banding and everything as we've done in the past for the night market? I have no other questions or comments, but Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Yeah, sorry, I'm new. Uh, prior, you you stick your um security agency is prior vision. Is that an internal agency?
Uh.
Or third party?
Third party.
Third party, okay, and they are licensed, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Five thousand, estimated five thousand?
Um fifteen hundred that come through the bar throughout the course of the night. But the event itself probably gets close to ten thousand.
Fifteen hundred, you said?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero three three one zero.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero three three one zero. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two five dash zero three three one zero is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-four, application number two five dash zero three three one one. From Free Spirits LLC, DBA Free Spirits LLC.
Good afternoon Commissioners and Chair, Matthew Choi, manager member for Free Spirits LLC. This is for the second bar for Honolulu Night Market, that's up by the H Mart. Uh, I have no changes to the investigative report.
So this one, I know it's by H Mart, but do you guys usually have the same amount of people that run through it or is it a little bit more, a little bit less?
Um, so it's fifteen hundred combined between the two bars.
Okay.
Okay, more people coming from Rashar Row side maybe.
Yeah, 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 that's what I'm thinking, right? The street is a little bit larger to get through, right? Okay, any Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero three three one one.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero three three one one. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two five dash zero one zero three three one one is approved.
Thank you.
Going on to agenda item number twenty-five. Application number two five dash zero three 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 one from Asian American. J C's D B A J C I Honolulu. Okay, so we'll cut circle back to number twenty-five at the end of the agenda. Coming back to onto the agenda, agenda item number twenty-six. Application number two five dash zero three eight five three from Cafe Giovanni LLC.
Good afternoon. Commissioners, John Ing, I N G, authorized agent attorney for the applicant. To my right is David Low Bima, L O W E hyphen B I M A. Uh, since you have a pretty packed agenda, it looks like. Let me address some of the investigators uh concerns, in particularly the timeliness of the special license application. Uh, on May twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, we checked this. Timestamp, date stamp of some of the documents, I personally dropped off all the documents and paid the fees. For this special license application. The only thing that was missing at that time was the lesser consent, which I actually got. After hours, but that was, that was subsequently filed on uh May twenty-five, twenty twenty-five by email. Uh, the. Return receipt showing notice to the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. Uh, was sent out. Was received by the board according to the return receipt on May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five and hand delivered to the commission. On June three, twenty twenty-five. So everything was in. Even though there was no application. Uh, number assigned yet, so for some reason. The application was just being held. For some reason, uh, I called. To see if everything had been received, a- anything was going on, I kept checking if there was an application number even assigned to this. And uh, I called on June twelfth, twenty twenty-five. And got transferred and I was told that the application would be worked on on Monday, June sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Uh, the investigator indicated that he didn't get it received. I think I believe on the seventeenth. And he worked on it and submitted his report on June eighteenth, so. Our, yeah, special license application was submitted well within the six weeks before. Uh, of course, the green card came back a little bit later, but everything else was submitted. By May twenty-five, twenty five, twenty twenty-five, but predominantly everything on the twenty-third of May. Uh, I think that's mostly the timeliness. But uh, other than that, I don't think I have anything else to add.
And Commissioners, any questions, type of action?
Gotta hit a Chair Hall's question probably to you.
What?
You would ask about the submission.
Oh, yeah, no, that's good, so. Especially as we come into the Fourth of July, uh, next week is gonna be very tight.
Yep. Motion to approve application number two five dash zero three eight five three.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero three. Eight five three, any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two five dash zero three eight five three is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to. Five minute recess, sorry to say. So, um, I'm gonna um ask for a five-minute recess, um, and then we'll be back in five minutes. Alright, thank you, we are back from recess. Um, we will go back onto our agenda. We will start with preliminary hearings and we'll call agenda item number seventeen, I mean, sorry, preliminary hearings. Agenda item number twenty seven, transfer application number two, five, dash, zero, zero, nine, eight, three. From Buho Waikiki LLC.
Mister Vice Chair, I'd like to make a disclosure. That I know uh, Mister Ryan Cole, we are uh colleagues at a private club. But it will not affect my ability to be impartial in deciding on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Sakamoto, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, um, Ryan Cole here, manager for Google Waikiki LLC, D B A Paris Lake, um, just. Here to answer any concerns or questions regarding the transfer of like this.
Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve transfer application number two, five, dash, zero, zero, nine, eight, three.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve agenda item number twenty seven, transfer application number two, five, dash, zero, zero, nine, eight, three. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Transfer application number two, five, dash, zero, zero, nine, eight, three is approved at the preliminary hearing and move being moved to um, public hearings. Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty eight, application number two, five, dash, zero, zero, two, seven, five, from. Oahu Katsu Inc., D B A Tonkatsu Kuro.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, uh, the president of the Oahu Katsu Inc. and also owner of the D B A Tonkatsu Kuro.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Sure, my name is Kyungjin Kang, it's K Y U N G J I N, and last name is Kang, K A N G.
Commissioners, um, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, zero, two, seven, five.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, zero, two, seven, five. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, application number two, five, dash, zero, zero, two, seven, five is approved at the preliminary hearing to be moved to public hearing. Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty nine, application number two, five, dash, zero, zero, seven, six, zero, from Aina Steak and Seafood LLC.
Good afternoon, chairs, rooms of commission, Gregory Shook, authorization appearing on behalf of applicant, we have received investigator quizzes report and no changes there to.
Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, zero, seven, six, zero.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, zero, seven, six, zero. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, application number two, five, dash, zero, zero, seven, six, zero. Is approved at the preliminary hearing being moved to public hearing.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty, application number two, five, dash, zero, one, three, nine, zero, from. The Ahi Brewing Company LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioner and Chair, uh, Mary Demontivating members, uh, managers and members. And to the left of me is William Parker and Michael Romeo representing the Ahai Brewing Company.
Um, Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, one, three, nine, zero.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, one, three, nine, zero, any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, application number two, five, dash, zero, one, three, nine, zero. Is approved at the preliminary hearing and being moved to public hearing. Okay, now, do we have? Number forty two, seven, we take in next?
Um, well, just a- after you deal with the catering license uh, applications, uh, the suggestion if you do number forty, immediately out there.
Okay, got it.
Thirty one, thank you, thirty two.
Okay, got it, I just was looking at this, is it next? Okay. My apologies. Going on to agenda item number thirty one, application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, three, four, from Sedexo America LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Justin Solusad appearing on behalf of Sedexo America. Uh, this is in regard to Kaloi Kai event, um. Only update I have is the projected is gonna be about four thousand people. Same thing, once it hits that forty five, we activate that, you know, undercover roamers and stuff.
You can do us a favor, I know this is out in October eleventh, as you get closer to your event, if you can just update the commission with the number, just so we have an idea.
Going forward, any events I do this far out, I definitely will.
Thank you. I have no other comments or questions. Any type of action or questions, Commissioners?
So just, how many would you expect to be consuming alcohol?
Uh, that one's hard, I mean. Halfish, I mean, it's, it's really hard to gauge, that Kaloi Kai is kind of a family thing, they, everybody comes, so. It's on the halfish lower end, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, three, four.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, three, four. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none. The chair also votes aye, application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, three, four is approved. Calling agenda item number thirty two. Application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, three, seven, from Sedexo America LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Justin Solusad appearing on behalf of Sedexo America. This is for Young the Giant, uh, never heard of him, but again, projected is thirty five hundred, um. Alternative, yeah, I tried doing my research about these bands, but, oh, yeah. So. Thirty five hundred is projected, same thing, I will definitely update you guys as it gets closer.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, three, seven.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, three, seven. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, application number two, five, dash, zero, three. Two, three, seven is approved. Calling agenda item number thirty three, application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, three, nine, from Sedexo America LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Justin Solusad appearing on behalf of Sedexo America. This one is for C C Winans, um. Religious Catholic music. Um, I'm just applying for it, we, if we did do it, it's gonna be beers and wines only, no hard liquor, um. Past couple, they just told me to apply for and um, yeah, they. Cancelled the event for alcohol consumption anyway, so I'm just throwing it out there, but.
Religious.
Religious, yeah, but this one, there was no writer saying we can't do it, so just gonna prepare for it.
Commissioners, any actions or a form of questions?
Motion to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, three, nine.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, three, nine. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, three, nine is approved. Calling agenda item number thirty four, application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, four, zero, from Sedexo America LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Justin Solusad appearing on behalf of Sedexo America, this is for an Alex Waring event. Uh, projected is about thirty five hundred, currently second thousand something.
Commissioners, any questions or a type of action?
Motion to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, four, zero.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, four, zero. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, application number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, four, zero is approved. Calling out of order, agenda item number forty. Request number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, four, two, from Sedexo America LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, this is a request to add on to a liquor license I got approved for. For the twenty four, no, I'm sorry, the twenty sixth, I believe, right? So this is for the twenty fifth add-on. Um, this is same thing, H S O, same event, they just added on a, a second day, a day before. Same plans.
Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve request number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, four, two.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve request number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, two. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, request number two, five, dash, zero, three, two, four, two is approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Going back on to our regular agenda, catering licenses, calling agenda item number thirty five, application number two, five, dash, zero, three, six, zero, nine. From Seventeen A Productions LLC, D B A Skull and Crown Trading Company.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Angelina Khan, K H A N, member of Seventeen A Productions LLC. Um, I would like to request to uh, please amend this application to add one event date. Um, Saturday, September twenty seven, twenty twenty five. Um, I do apologize for this last minute change, I've already obtained landlord authorization. And uh, will of course make the additional payment uh, prior to picking up the license approved.
Uh, Commissioner, with respect to this particular request, because of the way the agenda describes, it's a range of dates. And the September twenty seventh falls within that range. Uh, I would suggest that you, you can approve the addition of the um, additional date without amending the agenda.
Okay, that's September.
September twenty seven, twenty twenty five.
That'll just be a hundred thirty three days.
Yeah, so that would be the question, do we need to amend that portion of the agenda that says total of hundred and thirty two days?
Um, I guess, I guess that would be appropriate, thank you for that.
Is it, is it an additional day if it's within that range?
Well, because it's not contiguous days, yeah.
Okay.
So that's anything, I'm ju- assuming we probably would have to amend that unless there's some other day they don't wanna run, which I'm assuming that's not the case, okay.
So it's all the days. So we need a, a motion to amend the agenda.
At least that total number of days, cause it listed as one thirty two.
Motion uh, to amend agenda item number thirty five, application number two, five, dash, zero, three, six, zero, nine. To add an additional date for a total of a hundred and thirty three days within the stated batch.
Second.
Sorry, might wanna add Saturday.
Oh, be- oh, because this is.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, it's a best year, Sato.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me, let me. Start a little bit of that.
Why don't you just say, um, you're a total, change the total days to hundred and thirty, um, three days. Which will include Saturday as the listed dates, uh, days.
So the motion is to, for the amendment to be a hundred and thirty three days. To also include a Saturday amongst the listed date range.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to amend application number two, five, dash, zero, three, six, zero, nine. As verbiaged provided by Commissioner Sakamoto, any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, uh, application, agenda item number thirty five, application number two, five, dash, zero, three, six, zero, nine is amended, as stated. Now we need to take a movement or motion or questions on the amended agenda item.
Have no questions.
No question.
Motion to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, three, six, zero, nine as amended.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, three, six, zero, nine as amended. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Uh, agenda item number thirty five, application number two, five, dash, zero, three, six, zero, nine is approved as amended.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number thirty six. Application number two, five, dash, zero, three, seven, eight, four, from Hangon Inc., D B A Hangon Korean Grill House.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Min Young Woo on behalf of Hangon Inc. Um, there is no changes to the investigative report.
Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, three, seven, eight, four.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, three, seven, eight, four, any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, application number two, five, dash, zero, three, seven, eight, four is approved. Moving on to stock transfer applications, agenda item number thirty seven, application number two, four, dash, zero, one, one, five, one. From P C Pub Inc., D B A Hungry Mama Bar and Kitchen.
Again, good afternoon, Chair members, Commission Keith Kiuchi for the applicant. Um, I've read investigator's report, uh. What's, what was going on here is, I don't know if you know, Ruben Wong passed away about a month ago, Mister Wong was pretty sick. Uh, late twenty twenty three, when the first request came in, that's why. The second request came in from uh, Delwin Wong. He had started the transfer in twenty two, really kinda didn't get it done. Uh, Delwin Wong asked me to kinda help him and step in, so. This has been an ongoing process, as they say, so.
So my normal questions in all of these stock transfers is currently the commission has all of the correct names for, that should be listed within the corporation.
Yes, this was managed by, at one, one point by Gifer Chang, who's Ruben Wong's nephew, so all the records are there.
Okay. That's my only question, I have no other questions or comment, Commissioners, any comments, questions, or a form of action?
So Delwin Wong is voting all positions and bunch of percentage choose.
They have, yes, and just to fill the commission in there at least. Two other liquor licenses controlled by, that were controlled by the uh, really the landlord. And we're in the process of getting both of those cleaned up.
I have no other questions.
Motion to approve application number two, four, dash, zero, one, one, five, one.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, four, dash, zero, one, one, five, one. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, application number two, four, dash, zero, one, one, five, one is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty eight, application number two, five, dash, zero, one, five, eight, three. From S K B Inc., D B A Yobo Mart.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Min Young Woo on behalf of S K B Inc. Doing business at Yobo Mart and no changes to the investigative report.
Again, we come to stock transfers, this will, we have everybody correctly on file at the commission, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I have no other com- no other comments or questions.
Motion to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, one, five, eight, three.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, one, five, eight, three. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, application number two, five, dash, zero, one, five, eight, three is approved.
Thank you.
Going on to requests, calling agenda item number thirty nine, request number two, five, dash, zero, two, nine, eight, four. From Holly Eva Distilling Company LLC.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, um, Nathan Sisler, I'm the owner of Holly Eva Distilling Company, requesting approval of a permanent increase. Uh, for my area, this is for Lanai, that was built as is, that wasn't accounted for in the original permit as the plans changed during construction.
We need to get the confirmation of certified mail return receipt from the neighborhood board.
Sir, it's turned in, uh, neighborhood board is fully aware of this, there's no changes, they've walked the site multiple times, the positive feedback all around. No issues, and we do have that green card, I turned it in earlier today.
We got it, okay, good.
I have no other questions.
Motion to approve request number two, five, dash, zero, two, nine, eight, four.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve request number two, five, dash, zero, two, nine, eight, four. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, request number two, five, dash, zero, two, nine, eight, four is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going on to uh, request number forty one, request. Uh, agenda item number forty one, request from The Burger Wing Hub LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, I'm Caitlin O'Connell on behalf of The Burger Wing Hub LLC. Appearing with me is RJ McJaras, manager and member, requesting approval to increase its general special license, general, special general license.
Is a year, so we had some of, so we had some. Okay, so I guess there's some questions, so basically you already have licenses that have been approved. But you wanna increase your premises size, correct?
Yes.
With those licenses?
Yes.
Yeah, and so the increased space is about one thousand one hundred and eighty eight square feet, correct?
So from June twenty seventh, twenty twenty five to April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, so just so you know, right, I mean, I'm pretty sure you've seen the report. Okay, so just so you know, right, I mean, I'm pretty sure you've seen the report, um. You need to provide or give to uh the commission, right, the landlord's consent on for the additional um area. Before, even if we approve it, you we issued the license until we receive that.
Oh, that was provided last week.
Okay. All right, I have no other questions or comments.
There's no request, I'm just approving Agenda Item Number Forty One, motion to approve Agenda Item Number Forty One.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve um Agenda Item Number Forty One, request from DBA Burger Wing Hub LLC. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Request Number Forty One is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number Forty Two, Rainbow Valley Supermarket Inc., DBA Rainbow Valley Supermarket.
Good afternoon, co- commission, my name is Gifford Chang. I'm with Rainbow Valley Supermarket, requesting for a license to be kept in safekeeping.
So, sorry, your last name again?
Gifford Chang, C H A N G.
So Mister Chang, Chang, sorry, Mister Chang, how long has the license been in safekeeping?
I would say for about three or four years.
Three or four years. And you know, as as the years continue to build in safekeeping, we start asking a little bit more questions. Do you have any plans or what is your process or what are you thinking of doing?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, I did submit a letter to the commission informing them the situation, obviously, you know tourism down, businesses down. Even having liquor license to serve out there wouldn't be uh uh worth paying for at this time, I mean. I I wouldn't know how to explain to you about how well the economy is doing, but I think you all know what's happening in their papers. So that's o- only why, uh, only reason why we're putting in safekeeping.
But but you're still operating as a supermarket.
We're operating as a supermarket, but no liquor at this time, correct?
Right. I have no other questions.
Yeah. Motion to prove Agenda Item Number Forty Two for Rainbow Valley Supermarket.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve request number forty two for Valley Rainbow Supermarket, any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Request Number Forty Two for Rainbow Valley Supermarket is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Calling Agenda Item Number Forty Three, request from Cafe W B E L L C D B A Kakako Market.
Pick it up later.
So we'll circle back around to forty three, and I forget the other number we had. Twenty five, okay, calling Agenda Item Number Forty Four, Tings Place Inc., DBA Tings Place Dispenser.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the commission, Keith Kiuchi for the uh for the licensee. So this would be the second year we'd renew it in safekeeping. The background is that the uh, we still have a pending stock transfer that hasn't been completed. But uh, June thirtieth last year, the lease, the lease was terminated. And the uh licensee is looking to relocate it elsewhere. Um, if you look at the class of license, it's because that license has value, which is why you wanted to keep it open, so.
Um, so I guess the only question I have is the posted agenda doesn't say it's in safekeeping. Does it need to list that on there?
Um, I think most of the, most of these are. I know I did note that it's been safe in safekeeping since July twenty six. Of twenty four, hold on, let me.
Sorry, I just wanna make sure that.
Yeah.
It needs to, either it needs to be listed or not, cuz if we gotta amend it, then we gotta do it now.
Well, all of these, I mean, um, uh. All of these are requests to renew because they're in safekeeping, cuz otherwise they would not need approval. So I do, um, I mean, I know the the verbiage in the hearing memo says, um. Request to renew for the F Y twenty six license here and remain in safekeeping.
Okay. Sounds fine by me, I have no further questions.
Motion to approve. Agenda Item Number Forty Four for Ting's Place.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Item Number Forty Four for Ting's Place Inc. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Agenda Item Number Forty Four, request for Ting's Place is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number Forty Five, request from D R W Inc., DBA Treetops at Paradise Park.
Again, good after, good afternoon, Chair members of the commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. Um, D R W Inc. is owned by the Wong family, the Wong family has the lease for the old Paradise Park property. Even though this is a restaurant license, it would be impossible. If not very difficult to get that license back. The Wong, I think this is the third year we're going to safekeeping. The Wong still uh have the lease to the property, they haven't made any long term plans. Uh, the last time they had a tenant in the space using the license was, like I said, I think this is the third year in safekeeping. Wow, yeah.
I have no questions, type of action.
Motion to approve Agenda Under Item Number Forty Five or D R W A.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve request, Agenda Item Number Forty Five for D R W Inc. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Request Agenda Item Number Forty Five for D R W Inc. is approved. Calling under the request Agenda Item Number Forty Six, uh for Melody LLC, DBA Melody LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the commission, Yoko Ta, attorney for Melody LLC. Uh, applicant or licensee has found a new location, she signed a lease, so we're working on a change of location application. So this should be the last year for this request.
Where are they moving to?
Uh, it's near Sand Island.
Motion to approve Agenda Item Number Forty Six for Melody LLC.
Second, spirit move this second into approve Agenda Item Number Forty Six for Melody LLC. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Request Agenda Item Number Forty Six for Melody LLC is approved.
Thank you very much.
Calling Agenda Item Number Forty Seven, H S I Honolulu Joint Venture Company DBA Beer Kiosk at T. At T two Gate seven.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman of the Commission, Mr. Rai Robert Uyok on behalf of H S I Honolulu Joint Venture Company. We're doing businesses, H M S host at the Honolulu National Airport, says to renew a liquor license that's in safekeeping. This was in safekeeping since December twenty twenty two, it was due to a lack of passengers at G Gate, the farthest gate away from the main terminal. Uh, previously used by Southwest Airlines, now Southwest Airlines is using other gates, uh, not necessarily G Gate. So we wanted to request to renew the liquor license in safekeeping, uh, should we have more passengers and that we can reuse the liquor license.
Thank you for the explanation, I have no other questions.
Motion to approve Agenda Item Number Forty Seven for H S I Honolulu Venture Joint Venture Company.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Item Number Forty Seven from for H S I Honolulu Joint Venture Company. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Um, Agenda Item Number Forty Seven for H S I Honolulu Joint Venture Company is approved.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, calling Agenda Item Number Forty Eight, S M eight oh eight Inc., DBA Club Evergreen.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chair members of the commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. This is the sixth or seventh year it's being renewed in safekeeping. This is a cabaret license. And I frankly did not know until I tried to move Robert's cabaret license to the Alamoana Hotel. That BMX three does not allow cabaret license. If you look at most of Honolulu from Kapilani, King Street, Beritania, it's all BMX three. So, this year I've had four different sites presented to me by the licensee. All four were BMX three. The difficulty in trying to move a cabaret license is really high. Now, what's ironic about this is the site that we're on, if if you're not familiar with the site, it still really hasn't been developed. I mean, it's kinda sitting there dead in the water, and that was, that is BMX three. Yet the cabaret must have been grandfathered in, so.
They were there for years.
Right, they were, they're, they were there literally for thirty years. If you go back to other cabarets in the area, like where the old Carnegie nightclub was on Hopaka Street and Kona Street. That's also BMX three, so. There is a carve out where if it's in Kakako. H D C, H C D A jurisdiction may allow it, but that's a little problematic. What makes things even more difficult is if you go to Kalih, which has a lot of IMX three. Community schools will not allow a cabaret on their property, and they're in the process of taking over, taking back most of the leases. So that creates a challenge and um. It's not the easiest thing in the world, but I will tell you, this licensee has not been for lack of trying. Because I've had to pick up the phone four times, check four times, and tell them four times, you can't do that, so.
Well, good explanation, but you know, I mean, that's probably why the cabaret license is worthwhile to keep it. In some form of safekeeping, so you can do wherever you can at some point.
I, yeah, and and I, I, you know, I talked to the owners, this is probably gonna be their last shot. There's not a whole lot of alternatives you got out there, um. You know, that's kinda how it is, so.
Okay, I have no other questions, if any questions or comments or type of action.
Motion to approve Agenda Item Number Forty Eight or S M eight oh eight Inc.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Item Number Forty Eight for S M eight oh eight Inc. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Agenda Item Number Forty Eight, S M A eight oh eight Inc. is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number Forty Nine, Green Chateau Inc., DBA Pure Hawaii Gentlemen's Club Coyote Night.
Again, good afternoon, Chair members of the commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee, to my right is James Tannen. Who's the uh officer and director of the licensee, this is the third year.
Third year.
Third year that we'd be asking you renew it in safekeeping, this is also a cabaret license. This one's a little different cuz this is a nudity cabaret license, now. There's only, to my knowledge, one other, uh, there are no other cabaret nudity licenses left. Uh, and Mister Tannen has looked for a space, the space he was in was IMX. But uh, that landlord decided to go into a different direction. And like the previous licensee, Mister Tannen and I have talked at least twice this year. And one site on Sand Island, which is full of IMX three. He presented me a site off of Kapilani, and I said, can't do it in BMX. So that's, we're running into the same issues, um.
Were you here for the melody, um?
Yeah, we think, we we have a pretty good feeling that Melody ended up in the site he was looking at, so, yeah. There, there's not a whole lot off of Sand Island access road is the problem. Um, the site, that, that would have to be the old dancer's site. Yes, problem, I'm kinda dating myself because I know where all of these licenses were.
Used to be. Yeah, and he, thanks for the good explanation as well, any um questions or form of action, Commissioners?
Motion to approve Agenda Item Number Forty Nine for Green Chateau.
Second, soon moved and seconded to approve Agenda Item Number Forty Nine for Green Chateau, any nasal reservations? Hearing none, the chair also votes aye. Agenda Item Number Forty Nine for Green Chateau is approved.
Thanks.
Thank you. Calling Agenda Item Number Fifty. F C H Inc., DBA Zippies Restaurant.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the commission, Brian Chee, C H E E for licensee, F C H Enterprises Inc., DBA Zippies. Uh, licensee seeking to uh renew licenses in safekeeping. Um, they're mindful that's adverse business environment right now, and they're just valuing whether this case could be made. For restarting liquor sales, you know, in the future.
The South King Street location.
That's correct.
The gentleman here.
I'm sorry, uh, and this is uh Randy Pang, he's the operations manager for licensee.
I have no questions or comments.
Motion to approve Agenda Item Number Fifty for F B F C H Enterprises.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Item Number Fifty for F C H Enterprises. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Agenda Item Number Fifty for F C H Enterprises is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number Fifty One for F C H Enterprises, DBA Zippies Restaurant.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair and members of the commission, Brian Chee on behalf of licensee, F C H Enterprises. My left is Randy Pang, operations manager for licensee. I, again, um, let's see, just about the business case.
And this is the Vineyard Boulevard one, right?
That's correct.
Motion to approve Agenda Item Fif- Item Number Fifty One for F C H Enterprises.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Item Number Fifty One for F C H Enterprises. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Agenda Item Number Fifty One for F C H Enterprises is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number Fifty Two for F C H Enterprises Inc., DBA Zippies Restaurant.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair and members of the commission, Brian Chee on behalf of F C H Enterprises Inc. with uh Randy Pang. And have licensee, uh, they're seeking to renew the Waikua location, safekeeping.
Motion to approve Agenda Item Number Fifty Two for F C H Enterprises.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Item Number Fifty Two for F C H Enterprises. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Agenda Item Number Fifty Two for F C H Enterprises is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number Fifty Three for F C H Enterprises, DBA Zippies Restaurant.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the commission, Brian Chee have licensee, F C H Enterprises with Randy Pang. Uh, this is for the uh North Emirates Highway location.
Oh, I have a question, so, so which Zippies are left that actually serve alcohol?
Uh, I understand it's just the Kahala and the Pearl City locations.
Only two.
Only two, that's right.
Okay, thanks.
I have no other questions.
Motion to approve Agenda Item Number Fifty Three for F C H Enterprises.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve F C Agenda Item Number Fifty Three for F C H Enterprises. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Agenda Item Number Fifty Three for F C H Enterprises is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number Fifty Four for F C H Enterprises, Inc., DBA Zippies Restaurant.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair and members of the commission, Brian Chee on behalf of licensee, F C H Enterprises, Randy Pang. Uh, they're seeking to renew their uh license for the Waipapu location, safekeeping.
Motion to approve Agenda Item Number Fifty Four for F C H Enterprises.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Item Number Fifty Four for F C H Enterprises. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Agenda Item Number Fifty Four for F C H Enterprises is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling Agenda Item Number Fifty Five, Blind Ox LLC, DBA Blind Ox LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Stephen A. Cobra, representing Blind Ox LLC. Uh, seated to my left is Asa Ikeda, I K E D A, he's the owner of Blind Ox. Uh, where the license is apparent, uh, is obviously in safekeeping, the restaurant is closed. Uh, they're trying to get the um state clearance, state tax clearance taken care of so that we can do the renewal.
This is, okay, so this is just, this is just the one that's uncomfortable, right? Cuz there's, there's other, I I think there's some other one that's ongoing. While I was, right, I just wanna make sure it's not the same one we're talking. Okay, that's all I wanna make sure, cuz the other one is another bigger problem. Got it, okay, I have no other questions or comments.
Motion to approve Agenda Item Number Fifty Five for Blind Ox LLC.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Item Number Fifty Five for Blind Ox LLC. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Agenda Item Number Fifty Five for Blind Ox LLC is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Calling Agenda Item Number Fifty Six, Request Number Two Five Dash Zero Three Four Seven Six from Barbara. At Tali Authorized Agent on behalf of Plantation Tavern LLC.
Thank you for waiting for your patience.
Yes.
Yes, uh, good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, my name is Barbara Natal. N A T A L E, I'm the authorized agent for Plantation Tavern, doing business as Fairway Tavern. Um, we have been approved for a standalone temporary license, thank you. Uh, that would have um to both the Commissioners and to the staff. Uh, that would have gone into effect on June tenth, but we're asking for um. Uh, that would have gone into effect on June tenth, but we're asking for um. An extended effective date to September first. Um, the Fairway Tavern is still undergoing renovations and they're not quite ready to open just yet.
So I guess a question would be, is September first, do your client think September first is a long enough time? Or do they want to have a little bit more time than that? To, because then otherwise you'll have to come back again and ask again, we're just asking, if you want us to keep it at September first, we can. But I'm just asking.
I do appreciate the question, I was uh texting back and forth with the client, um at this point. Uh, we will go with the September first date and if we do need to extend, we will come.
I have no other questions or comments, uh, type of action or um.
Yeah, it's a question, so. The temporary license started on June tenth already and you're eating into your days or you haven't started?
I did submit the request prior to the June tenth date, uh, let's see, I submitted it up on June eighth.
Okay.
Motion to approve request number two five dash zero three four seven six.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero three four seven six. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, request number two five dash zero three four seven six is approved. Okay, we'll go back on the agenda items real quick, I believe it was twenty five first that we had to check with. Twenty five, application two five dash zero three 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 one from Asian American J C's. No one for J C's, can we look to um re uh move that to the next available? And then, what was it, forty? Forty three. Yeah. Kakako Market. Negative, I guess if we can look to.
Yeah.
Available as well. Okay, so we'll go back onto our agenda, we'll call number. Uh, agenda item number fifty seven, Liquor Commission Review of Commission's Experience with Pilot Program. Reduction in fees of special past ten liquor license applications.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sopakilos, Administrative Hollow Little Liquor Commission. And I think, uh, Doug, if you have it, the.
We have it in our back end, but it's not appearing on the screen. But if you want to start.
Yeah, so I, I think that the question was what the experience of the commission has been over the past few months, um. The program began in January of this year and I think the, the initial uh request was made by. Um, it's not pure, there are eleven in total. Uh, I think the, the wiggle that, the wiggle that. The commission experienced was with the second uh application, second request that. Uh, I believe that, that was Island Sound Studios and, and that request was approved. Despite the fact that the applicant had not gone through two temporary uh licenses. Uh, additionally, uh, as you can see, uh. Little Plum Restaurant, both those are also approved and also. An outlier again is Red Bar LP where, well, that, where that request was approved, but the commission denied uh. Uh, further reductions in the, in the fee for attorney's fees. Uh, moving onward, uh, of course, uh, last couple of weeks ago, uh. Couple of uh requests were with, were withdrawn simply because they had not met the threshold of two temporary licenses. I think i- if you look at the fee reduction, you can see that there, this is uh basically the number of, of days. At nine dollars a day divided by two, uh, they're, they're, these are all uh special, general. So that's the rate that applies to those, to those reports, uh, I think. In, in terms of what the, what the commission is trying to do, I think providing relief for, for those that have gone through the, through. To uh, to temporary licenses and still have to rely on, on. On, on, on specials, uh, I think this, this is a good way of providing relief for. For the, for the applicants and situations where. The, the agency has not been able to, to, to uh process the applications for.
And how's the processing on the operations side for you?
I, I think we're, we're trying to find ways to, to, to reduce the time that, that. Uh, the applications are, are in place, as I think I mentioned, uh. Two weeks ago that we had begun the process of, of, of reaching out to uh app. Applicants of, of new applications, uh, where we had not heard from them and, and, and asked them to. Either withdraw the application or, or, or provide, provide documents and information. Uh, there have been several that have, that have withdrawn, but also several have provided uh. Uh, documents that are necessary to for us to move forward, so hopefully that. By, 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 by that process, we'll be able to, to force the issue. In the sense that you either with, the applications either withdrawn until they're ready to begin again. Or they provide us with the information we knew for, with, with, with investigation.
There have been kind of requests to expand the ability to waive fees beyond just. The two temps.
I, I think, I think. I haven't seen any formal requests, I think people have, have, I think applicants have stayed within the bounds of, of the pilot project. But I think, uh, you know, but a- again, uh, it took, it took. It took a recognition that Sound Studios LLC, that, that, that. Uh, recognition that may, that may have been uh approved in, in, in error. Because of not meeting the, 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 the two, the, the preconditions necessary to grant it. Uh, but ever since then, I think the commission has, has basically uh. Abided by the conditions that have been placed on it and, and, and. Where necessary, where, and, and as you can see in, on, on the twelfth of June, uh. Two applicants withdrew their request simply because of the fact that they had not met the, the criteria for, for, for uh a reduced fee.
I do think though that we do need to take some consideration or reviews on how we want to deal with places such as like Little Plum. They did not have the ability to use two temps because they were in a situation where they didn't have a license there before. And we did provide them the reduction in fee based on that status, so I do think. That if we review or do some things with this pilot program as we move forward or through that. I do think we need to figure out some ways to address some of those situations because those licensees. Are gonna fall into the same queue and gap as anyone else and they have no real way. To use, you know what I mean, no real way to use anything other than. Um, not only specials, but like, yeah, no, yeah, like ninety day ones, you know, and so. I think we have to have some discussion on that, cause I do think some people will at some point determine not to look to file a license. Or do something until they know they're gonna get it through. Quick enough for them not to lose money on their business, so it's just a thought.
I think further discussion is warranted because. There were a few times and it seemingly, people were trying to snake the system. Or look to loopholes and then play the commission, forcing the commission to. Reconsider and go into executive session for further discussion, which was outside of the original intent of why the pilot. Program was established.
You gotta find all those ones where they tried, those loopholes.
Yeah.
It's a good point.
Uh, but I think the, the two temps seem pretty solid and in terms of. The uh expansion for people that, you know, don't have that option, maybe we should. Discuss having a set of criteria so that there's no loopholes that even discuss.
Because yeah, I think no matter what we do, if you burn through two temps and you're still waiting, we gotta give them some relief. Especially if it's on us, it's on our end, right? If it's your attorney slowed down or someone else decided not to give up their, their license, that's up to you. You're the one allowing them to do that, right, so. Which I do believe one of them will be settled by today, which someone got their. Their tiki bar and grill got their license, right, so I think we'll get some of those settled in the long run, but I do think. That's the question.
So maybe we can formalize this, if you could write up, um. What the actual program is going to be in terms of, which is pretty much what we have now.
Yeah.
Um, for us to review at a future um processes and procedures hearing. And a recommendation for the number of days that we should set. Um, as a time that we would then. Does that sound to you?
Yeah, when, when pilot period, we, we're gonna have this continue for all of twenty twenty five, is that the intent?
Hmm, no, I think we should, once we have this discussion and set. Cause I think the, the temp is good, it's just this other slap, small expansion and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, that's probably better, we don't wanna bound ourselves to something, so, well, when we hear back and then we can. Put a bow on it, then we can cease the pilot and have.
This goes into normal practice, it's just we do these things.
Right.
And these are your criterias.
Right.
Is that?
It's also included in the upcoming rulemaking.
Yeah.
So there'll be another, although in the rules, it's, it's a, a lot broader strokes. But it will be recognized in the rules as uh one of your capabilities and then you can, I guess, fine tune beyond that.
Okay, right. Alright. So we'll go on to agenda item number twenty eight?
Fifty.
Or sorry, agenda item number fifty eight, we were at twenty eight, I'd be like sick already. Agenda number fifty eight, liquor administrator, administrative matters.
Well, I don't want to go back to the, is it item number twenty eight, Commissioner Selfatilis, Administrator, only the liquor commission. Uh, I think a couple of weeks ago, I, I, I discussed the fact that we, that we. Needed to recruit people into certain, into certain uh sections of the agency, just wanted to let you know that. Uh, the, the HLC is participating in the federal to municipal recruiting program that was started. Uh, we're hoping to, to get a lot of candidates for LCI one through that program. Also, our ASO interviewed candidates to feel, to fill hearing reporter positions on a contract basis. Uh, and also had interviewed trading specialist candidates for, for, for permanent uh placement. Uh, additionally, I think, uh, again, uh, you know that we meet with a, with a. With the D M D on, on a monthly basis and uh while we were in, um. In, in the NCS LA conference, uh, our Department Staff Executive Assistant. Met with the D M D uh first monthly status for operations. Um, I think, uh, the, 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 the main focus right now for us are renewals. And as of the, as of yesterday, we had received thirteen hundred and five applications for renewal. We've issued eleven hundred and three licenses, a hundred and twenty two are approved pending issuance. Uh, so basically, total of one thousand two hundred and twenty five have been approved. Uh, there's a delta between the thirteen oh five and the twelve twenty five. Uh, there's a base taken up by twenty four new submissions, one reviewed pending approval. Fifty one with deficiencies that need to be corrected and four licenses that have, have not been renewed. Again, uh, to, to, to reiterate, we have begun the process of sending letters, request information, documents. For uh, for, for, for longstanding applications and so hopefully. Regardless of, of what's going on, but at least there's, there's going to be some, some movement on those and perhaps. Uh, getting, getting those uh through the process, uh. Not so much quicker, but more in, in a timely way, in that, you know, we're addressing those issues and we're moving forward on, on those things. And understand that these are typically the ones that are long in the tooth, so to speak. And I, I think the, the idea here is that by taking, being able to take care of those. At least we, 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 we reduce the, the, the processing time, at least in terms of averages and the metrics that we lose. Again, for us, the, the, the critical thing is to overhaul that delta between applications and, and process that. Process the applications, uh, and to that end, you know, we're, we're still trying to recruit additional licensing tax to help with that. Uh, finally, I think, uh. Our chief investigator and members of administration, assistant administrator, R I, D S A, Masamoto. ASO, uh, De Guzman, met with H G A today to discuss the uniform policy. I think everything went well and. I believe we are going to have a soft bill like eighth in terms of the uniforms. The next, of course, the best thing is a body warm catalog policy, that's the next for us. And with that, I am open to any questions.
So regarding the ASO interviewing applicants, is this for eighty ninety higher contract or limited term personal service contract?
Uh, personal services contract.
So that'll be like limited term up to a fiscal year.
Uh, how do I reconcile the renewal numbers? I know you're kind of going quickly, I was trying, are we like, we're, we're a few days away and it's.
A few days away.
Like ninety plus percent?
Yeah, we, we definitely have around fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
But right now, we have thirteen and five applications that, that have, for renewal.
Okay.
One thousand two hundred and twenty five basically approved, yeah, a, a small bit that needs to be sent back, uh. And the, the, the difference between the, the two numbers are the result of. Uh, twenty four new submissions that haven't been looked at yet, there's one that's reviewed pending approval, uh. Fifty one have been found to have deficiencies, so those are try, those have been, uh, I think they have been, have been. Informative those deficiencies and they're trying to remedy those and then this four, four licenses that have not been renewed.
I know it's been busy for the staff.
It has been very busy and, 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 uh, I think just getting busier. And I think that a lot of people who, there, there are a lot of license, licensees and applicants who, who suppressing now. Are, are still trying to get through the process. Uh, again, uh, I think it's important to note that. By July one, we, we enter a new. Uh, really critical phase for us, which is the GLS.
That's right.
I think the, the letters for, for that have, have gone out already. We intend to follow it up with, with an e-blast so that everybody's aware that GLS reports are, are, are due. Sometime very soon.
Please thank the team on behalf of the Commissioners.
The one thing I had wanted to, for like, as we continue to look right at filling positions that are open. And doing contracts and those types of things, I do think we would, we need. After we finish all this major stuff going on with relicensing and GLS and other things, I do think we need to have a list of how many individuals. We have that are either on like a contract or a renewing contract or something like that and if they are on those. And the money is being used to fill those positions. From permanent positions, I think we need to have some idea how many that is. Because as we strive to either fill permanent positions or strive to say we need to make some of these people that might be contract. Into a permanent position, I think we need to figure out how we do that. Because I, I don't want to be stuck where we have a ton of contracts filling permanent positions and then contracts either don't renew. Or get left off or that we lose people that we really need to finish the work we're doing. So that would be something, I mean, I'm not looking for it in July, but sometime in August, if we can have an idea of the number of people we have, just so we know.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No questions.
Alright, and with that, we'll move to agenda item number fifty nine, liquor commission announcements, any announcements?
You're out, you're out next week.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have a three man crew next week. We'll get through, we'll get through.
Yep.
And with that.